Any discussion, all in favor, say aye. Okay, we're working on the claims. I went through them. Bobby's went through them. You're it. Okay. I went through them this morning. Yeah, okay guys. Number three, Dean?
Oh, yes. That is the resolution to loan Benham Community Hospital 700,000. They returned the 475,000 check from right around this time last year. And then we are redoing that loan resolution for 700.
That check was never cashed, was it?
Never, yeah, no.
I move we approve the resolution.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
If you go with the resolution.
Thank you. Alright.
Number four?
And who did make that motion, I'm sorry?
I made the motion.
Bobby's second.
Is it number four?
Yep.
Okay. So I got an email from Susan Peter. I don't know if that's her name. So she wants a BTPT meeting, March 25th, after our regular meeting at one.
Is that fine? Your turn.
Yeah, we talked about it.
Okay.
We've got some things come up that, well, I fit all the jurisdictions in the county.
Okay.
Keep everybody in the loop, anyway.
Number five?
Just their annual report. They just sent one copy. It's on your desk.
Did you get anything back on the request of?
Yes, that's the next thing. Number six. So he sent me a sample letter from Cheshaw, and I drafted it for number six. And it's just basically asking to appoint Commissioner Lambert to replace Bud. And then you'll remain the primary. So he's the alternate, you're the primary.
So I'm the alternate, then? Okay.
Right? Did I word that right?
That's fair.
Okay.
I don't know.
No, they don't. They're really strict on that.
Okay. So it goes to, so it used to be Pete Catsleo Meese? Is that how you say his name?
Pete. You're losing me.
The letter.
Oh, I don't know who.
Okay. So neither did Terry Hartwood. He didn't know who had replaced him. So I just put it to the special assistant for boards and commissions. Because he wasn't sure who had replaced him.
Yeah, I'm not either.
So, yeah, it's number six in your packet. If you guys want to approve that. And then I have this to sign.
You want to make a motion on that somewhere?
I don't want to make a motion.
Okay.
It'll be a point. I don't know if I want to second that.
Yeah, you do.
Okay, okay.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, well, I'm Terry. Number seven. The great city of St. Mary's wastewater system information packet. Did you look at it?
I didn't.
You're about to speed on it.
I'm unfortunately up to speed on it, yes. Yes, I'm up to speed on it. This is a letter from Mayor Carver. With just a packet of information. He wanted to get in front of the commissioners for no action today at all. But just to go ahead and, he's asking you to look at the historic documents again for the county wastewater system. And he's got some ideas. He's been putting together just some information on the lift stations. And he has got some ideas how to update them without undergoing any kind of major project. And wants to, at some point, talk to either the commissioners as a group, or if you want to designate a kind of a working group, or a commissioner to work with him to see what his ideas are on the upgrading the wastewater system for the county.
The systems, the tanks.
Specifically the lift stations.
Okay.
Yeah.
How much of the system is the county responsible for?
Outside of the city, all of it.
About 15 lift stations.
Fifteen locations?
15 lift stations.
Lift stations? That's all.
This deals, we're feeding the horse, but we don't get to ride the horse. That's what that is. That's, we're, that's, we've had that thing for years and it's terrible.
How do we get into that?
Well, we were pushed in the, they were trying to put sewer, not sewer systems, but what we do normally out in the country. And they have, they claimed that. So we, in the wetlands, so we had to put a system in. And, but, uh, but you know, we get nothing out of that. The county, or the city gets every, all the money out of that. And we've been stuck on it. And we've not, and if we get that thing updated, then we're going to give that to the city whether they want it or not. Because we get nothing out of them.
Yeah, it doesn't make sense for us to finance it.
No?
City's been charged of operating since it was put in there. And they didn't essentially charge enough and keep enough in reserve that when lift stations were out to upgrade or replace them. So now they're looking for outside money to repair or replace the lift stations. We did two here about three or four years ago. I think the estimate was.
Hundred and some thousand.
Hundred twenty-five.
Yeah, terrible. Not a good job.
Hundred seventy-five, it turned out. So we're obligated to fix the lift stations at this point? Somebody is.
I think we are. I'd like to, I think we are. But.
So this packet of information is just those historic documents?
Yeah.
Kind of, and some analysis of those historic documents? And then a limited analysis of the condition of those lift stations? But Commissioner Beal's correct. It's a county system that the city operates. And so.
Then what?
City collects the funds for it.
Correct.
Yes. And what we went through, for a while there, they were really, I mean, they were had a full-timer guy on there, which didn't need a full-timer. So we're kind of in a bunhead situation. And I, what we've got to do is get them up to speed and give it back. Make them take it. That's what we've got to do. And, you know, we need to get a grant or something, some help somewhere to do that. But we, and they got ideas, but ideas is to get them to fix as cheap as you can. And that's it.
And Mayor Carver has, I mean, I've listened to his ideas. And they're pretty, pretty, very practical, relatively low cost, attacking, you know, the real problems with each of those lift stations. So he's just really got some good ideas. He doesn't have the exact cost or anything pulled together like that.
What's your timeframe on getting that done?
Oh, there is no timeframe. As quick as you can get it. When they fail, what we should do, and I think he's doing this, I think we need to pick out the worst ones. Take one or two, or whatever we have to do and repair it.
So what he's identified is just, he's looked at all the lift stations, and there's things that are wrong with each one of them. Just, I mean, but real basic things, like the manhole covers need replaced. And the rails that the pumps slide up and down on need replaced. A lot of them only have one pump instead of two pumps, which they're supposed to have two pumps in order to operate properly. He's got some ideas of taking out the floats that are in there and replacing them with a more efficient, single, single system. Mayor Carver, if you know, he's an electrician. He's got some ideas on how to kind of get the electrical panels changed a little bit, but not replacing them. They're really all just kind of real practical, looking at each one, saying, okay, this one needs new rails. Have someone come in and replace those rails. Or this one needs a new, a new cover on it. Let's talk about that. So.
And that stuff, in my opinion, and I think he's doing, that stuff needs to be up on top. It means nothing that don't have to be down below. And there's a lot of that stuff, and it won't survive it. And so it should be, the pumps, everything should be up on top. And I think he's looking.
What he said to me is that he doesn't feel like any of them need replaced.
Right.
None of them need replaced. They all need some maintenance, ranging from, you know, some welding work or to pump replacement. He thinks that pump replacements are the most expensive things. The pumps would need to stay in the holes. But if the rails were working properly, they could just be pulled up to be worked on. So nobody would have to be going down in there.
But everything should be, you know, and I tried, I tried to talk to Nick about that, you know. And he never really gave me a good answer about being practical with them. Because, you know, there's, it's, the price we get in, and we can, you know, if we can get 30, 40,000 in one, then you're talking. But you got 13, I think, ain't you?
I think this, this number, I think.
I think you got 13.
Replace two.
Two, still.
But they may have given us some problems.
Yeah, they have.
So, I mean, his request is, go ahead and, you know, familiarize yourself with the system if you're not already familiar with it. And Commissioner Beal, he knows you're familiar with it. And you have been as well. Of course, you're not yet. So that packet of information helps there. And then, and then start the discussion with the city on how are we going to get these repaired? And he doesn't want to, you know, he's not using the word replaced at all. It's repaired. And he's got a good, he's been able to explain those lift stations to me in a way that I actually understand what a lift station is, and how they work, and how the pumps work, and what's going on with them. So he really understands them.
Good.
And is looking for a very practical solution to get some of them repaired.
Listen, I had to look at you Saturday. Now I got to look at you today?
Here I am.
So the idea is to look at that and then get back to him on, you know, yeah, let's talk about setting maybe a budget for doing some of these repairs to get them up to snuff, or a plan on what to attack first.
I think what we'll do is have him come in, maybe next time, come in maybe at eight, and give us a half hour run-up while.
Good idea.
Put you up to speed, you know.
That's a lot better idea than going in there and just tearing everything out and replacing.
Yeah.
Starting.
That's where I started this thought process, was I thought that they, I thought it had been said that they all need replaced and moved above ground and all this stuff. And he's saying, no, that's not at all what needs to happen. It just needs some, some real practical fixes.
Yeah. Okay.
That makes sense, yeah.
Let's do that. Number eight?
CFTM, that's Friday.
Yes.
Where is that located at?
Yes.
Associated Lock, Associated Lockers. Does CFTM mean?
Property Tax on Diver.
Yes. Associated Lockers on Friday the 15th.
Okay. It's Friday, isn't it? Nine?
So that's a, this is a two-step one. So anyways, the Corlaine Restoration Partnership, they're having a meeting. Oh, have to effectively use the collective input and ideas on their applications for restoration projects. So they're having a meeting on March 19th at the DEQ office in Corlaine.
That's a vision game that group is in?
Yeah. So they, they're the ones who've come, like, as four or five. That's the Dan Redline and the Kaisha. I can't remember who all comes. But yeah, it's that team of four or five.
They brought that up at the Corlaine Basin.
Okay. So then, along those same lines, number 10. So she was trying to get ahold of our county representatives, which last year, we had appointed Pam and Dean to serve on that. And since they have resigned, her name's.
Maybe Dean would like to serve on that.
Oh, do you want me to ask him to? See if he would continue? Okay.
Yeah, talk to Dean. He said he'd be willing to do some work.
Okay. So that's, that was number 10. She was wondering who we would like to replace there. So, okay, I will reach out to Dean.
Number 12?
Do we do 11?
Did we do the vision?
Right. So that's just the.
And that's you, me?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Let's go with 12.
And then 12 is?
Fair Housing?
Oh, yes. So it's that time of year when we have to declare April as Fair Housing Month for our, for Wood Water and Sewer Grants. And I didn't get a chance to, like, type this up nicely for our county. So as long, we will be doing that, right? I'll have it, I'll have it ready. Or if you guys want to make a motion, because it looks like only you sign it. So if we make a motion, then I'll get it ready and call you in.
Yeah, okay.
If, if that would work for you guys.
Yeah. Will that work, Phil?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay.
Okay. So, motion by?
I move.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
Second?
I want just about a moment.
Why, I have a new grade here.
I'll second that.
Okay, we've got a second, though.
It is just a grant requirement from Wood Water and Sewer. Has a, has a, I want to say DEQ, some sort of state grant.
DEQ.
And just as a grant requirement, the county every year has to declare that the county offers fair housing.
Fair housing, we're a fair housing county.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Golf court precinct opening? That's not much of a discussion.
I know.
When the snow is gone.
And I just wanted to let you know that Mendon Halls came in last week, maybe even. Anyways, they stopped in last week and said that they're on board for another season if, if the county, if you guys are okay with that. And if you are, they requested no changes to their contract. Just a renewal at the same, same terms.
Did that work for us last year?
It did.
I don't think it gave me any problems, did it?
Uh-uh.
No, I didn't hear it. How the golf course management is different than the restaurant part of the golf course?
Yes.
The restaurants lease to, they got, yes.
Casa de Oro, Marco Rome.
For what I understand, golf courses owned jointly by the city and county. And we, we.
We don't allow judges in here.
Why not?
How are you?
I am well.
How are you, well?
Kate came over here to license your new car.
I did. Yes, I did.
Kate, we need some revenue.
Good to be here. How are you guys?
Good.
Good. I don't want to interrupt. Keep, keep going.
You can interrupt. All right.
So I guess, maybe my only thing would be to, to renew that contract. You guys are okay with that? So I'll work with Mariah or Nancy, too.
If they want.
I think we just update the dates.
Okay.
Okay. And open whenever the weather's willing.
It'll be a while.
I know.
All right, really. Stimson lumber, I don't know, I'm 14, what that is. I know what it is, but I don't know the, I don't.
Exactly what they want from us.
Yeah, I don't.
Commissioners, do you have the second page of that letter? Because I think only the first part of it was in the packet that got emailed. And there's a second page to the letter. So they, yeah, they have their whole packet. Because they each got it mailed to them. Yeah.
Commerce call tomorrow. Is that what, then?
Yes, as far as I know. Commerce call tomorrow for the legislative update.
Idaho Housing Homeless Report.
They sent us one report. I think I threw it in the middle there. But I included just a couple of pages with, I don't know, some percentages of homelessness in Idaho. For annual report. It's the season, I guess, for annual reports.
Seventeen. Follow-up information on your.
Yes. So the gal who was here, Zlata, I think one of you guys had asked whether the, whether any tribal information was in her report. And I don't believe it was. And so she sent, she sent, she emailed some tribal information. It wasn't really broke out like she presented our information, so.
Wasn't much information.
It was, I agree. It wasn't much information. And it was kind of old, like, from 20, like, the newest on there was, like, from 2013 or something. So it wasn't very updated, so. But anyways, she did email it to you guys, so.
But they had their own court system, so.
You knew that, you wasn't going to get a very good report on that, didn't you?
Oh, yeah.
Videos on public defenders.
You know, we got the grant to put in that video conferencing. And I do believe they used it for the first time last week. It's up and running.
Good.
And our main public defender, Stacia, she used it maybe a couple of times last week to do some first appearances, so.
Great.
Yeah, that's great. So we, it's working. They have a couple of hiccups to work out. And just, one of her emails maybe talked about, I don't remember how she worded it. We may need to readdress this in October when we, when they renew their contract, I'm assuming. So I just wanted to give a heads up to Mariah. Mariah did check, though, and her current contract did mention doing first appearances and possibly by remotely.
So what would the pattern, why would she want to do something with her contract?
Well, so I was reading her string of emails. And I think what she was initially saying is, is should the conflict defenders be doing some of those first appearances? And then she realized, no, they were included in her contract, but not in the, it's, it's, she's the one that's agreed and is under contract to do those. So then I think that she's saying that maybe, maybe she would want it to be added to the conflict public defender's contracts in October. Or maybe she's going to ask for an increase in.
Good. Save her time.
Pardon me?
To save her time.
I would think so. I think we just see how it goes until then. And then we can address it after we've got, you know, some months under the, under, right, doing, working under that system to see how it's going. Yes, I would think it would, it would save time, make it so they don't have to come down here as much.
Yeah, yeah.
I did reach out, so that Aaron Frudenthal, our public defense commission guy, he gave me the name of Aaron Hooper, who has taken on a couple of counties and does only first appearances and only by video conferencing. So I did reach out to him to see what his price would be. So I didn't know if that would be something we wanted to pursue, just like, give him all of our first appearances, and then, you know, farm out the cases to the public defenders.
How would that work if he'd be just one time deal with it?
Yes.
So how would that happen? I wouldn't think that would.
So I think it's working in a couple of other counties. But if we can get it worked out with Stacia, that'll work, too. I don't quite understand how it works. It doesn't make sense to me. But what the ACLU and the Public Defense Commission is saying is, is that they want an attorney at that first appearance. And they understand that that attorney at that first appearance is not going to be, is not very likely to be the same attorney that follows the defendant through their case.
That doesn't make sense, though, does it? Wouldn't you want the attorney that's going to follow Sue to be on the first appearance?
At that, at that first appearance, they don't even, they don't have any, the answer's yes. I would think so. But that's not how they're running the systems. And they're saying, we just need an attorney at that first appearance to talk specifically about bond and advise the defendant how to argue for a bond reduction or what factors they need to look into that. So it's a very limited representation. And it is what they're doing in a lot of other counties. And it's kind of what Stacia is doing for us. Because, just because she does that first appearance doesn't mean that one of the other defenders doesn't necessarily get that case. So it's kind of what we're doing here.
They're trying to, to walk the defendant through his legal rights. The legal rights process mainly not, maybe nothing to do with this ongoing case. Just make sure his legal rights are protected.
I think that's the idea. It's not an extensive representation. It's not a full discussion or, you know, delving into what the facts of the case are, the charge, defenses. It's not that kind of representation. It's solely looking at, you know, what should the bond argument be for this person? Do they need, need help making that bond argument to get a bond set at a reasonable amount?
That's what the state commission's been pushing really hard, is to make sure there was a first appearance there. And that's the only way it's going to work for us, is through this video conferencing without costing someone tons of money to travel to and time.
Right.
It does, but I, that guy, that first appearance is kind of when they make some of them decisions. I mean, what kind of a, I don't know. I don't like that very well. But I, we'll just see how it plays out.
Well, what we're talking about is somebody that didn't have, under the previous way most of the counties were operating. They did not have an attorney at that first appearance. And so I think the idea is having an attorney at that first appearance, even if it's not the same attorney that's going to follow them through the case, is better than not having an attorney at all.
Well, they should have had attorneys first. So we made sure we was doing that, so, you know, that's.
I think by having states should do it, our main public defender do it, the chances are that they are getting that initial contact with their first, with their attorney that's going to follow them through the case. And I think it is ideal to do it that way.
Who set the regulations, Mike?
Pardon me?
Who set the regulations for having an attorney that's not going to follow the defendant through their system?
Well, there's a, there's a lawsuit filed by the ACLU against the state of Idaho claiming that the way that the counties are providing public defense representation is not constitutional. And one of those pieces is that first appearance. There's a lot, there's a lot to it. But one of the things that they have said is that not providing a defense attorney to indigent defendants at their first appearance in court where they're arguing bond is not constitutional. So there's a lawsuit, ACLU, against the state. And as a result of that, the state has set up this public defense commission. And they're the ones that are setting, promulgating rules that then the counties have to follow.
There hasn't been any challenges to have an attorney that's not associated with the defendant just to start with?
I am not aware of that. I'm assuming, I mean, it's the way they're setting these up across the state. And this, and all the rules, they've gone through a lot of vetting and a lot of meetings and all this before they're setting those rules, so. But I haven't been involved with that. So I don't know how extensive that discussion has been on that topic.
Comment, comment period. Just hold it, take, bring it up in the comment.
Question, if that's.
Yeah. Go ahead and ask the question.
The question is, is the video, does the, is the defendant still in jail and appearing in court through video? Or is the attorney appearing in court for the defendant who's in, in the courtroom?
So we have a, the video conferencing set up in the jail and in the court. So if they come down in front of the judge, it can be there or it can be in the jail. We may set up new places. And the defense attorney is probably remote. Probably calling in from their office.
And the defense attorney is probably remote, probably calling in from their office in Coeur d'Alene or wherever their office is.
Anybody, any more questions on the city?
Well, hopefully they'll get us, uh, so we don't have to be a part of ACLU lawsuits, ACLU lawsuits.
Shouldn't be, shouldn't be in an, in a, in a way, because we weren't doing, we were on the right track.
Yeah, our contract's always good, but.
That was the one piece that, um, that the Public Defense Commission said that they were concerned about for Benoit County is not having that video conference in place. So now it's in place, and he had told us that was the only concern for Benoit County, so. So I think you're right, Commissioner LeFret, hopefully that takes any target off Benoit County that might have been on.
Until they bring up something else. Like our jail on being turned.
Nineteen. Dee?
We received, um, a request from Daniel Perry with Senior Companions Program from Panhandle Health District, and he is wanting to, he was wanting Benoit County to proclaim April second as, he said Cutney County Senior Companion Day, but I think he meant Benoit. Benoit County Senior Companion Volunteer Day. And same with the other one, I didn't get a chance to redo his sample proclamation for Benoit County, but if you guys wanna do that, I can get it ready for Jack's signature later this week. That's something you guys want to proclaim?
Okay.
I move.
Okay.
Any more discussion, all in favor, say aye. Okay. Kansas votes, who votes, what works for you, Dee?
Well, I was, um, kinda thinking if legislation is still in session, um, so the nineteenth, if we could just do it like at two or two-thirty before the conference call?
Yeah.
So March nineteenth at two-thirty?
That work for you?
To canvass the votes?
Yeah, is that, uh, how long do I have to, that week? What time do you say to you?
Um, I'm, it just takes a few, it doesn't take very long at all.
How about, how about?
So I'm thinking two-thirty?
How about two o'clock?
Two o'clock, okay.
Yeah.
Two PM on the nineteenth?
Yeah. Okay.
And I, I do believe there is a deadline, but I can't remember what it is. It might be that next Friday, um.
I know, there's a certain number of days you have to have.
Yeah, there is, but the nineteenth still meets our requirement.
I, I gotta swing by, Plumber told me to shovel off the handicap ramp there.
Oh, if they can.
They should be.
All right, unless it's a chunk of ice.
Well, that, here's, that's a twenty-first, twenty-one?
Oh, yeah, that's just the.
That's the end.
Yeah, they're just gonna be treating some of their properties with herbicide, and the county must have an adjoining.
You know which property that is, or?
Twenty-two. There's water adjudication, nothing on that, huh?
Oh, we actually do have some stuff.
Do we?
So, um, moving slowly through the process is basin ninety-five of the water adjudication process. And so they finally have issued the recommendations, the director's report for basin ninety-five. We have three destatement claims in that, in that basin. Commissioner LeFret, I believe there in, in your district, there might be one in, in your district as well. And so they're for our destatement claims, where we take water out of the river, the streams in order to water the roads during the summer or during maintenance periods. And so those have been recommended, um, and they're at the, the level where there's an objection period running, and presuming there's no objections, then they should be decreed in October. Will they change that date? It's actually not, no, it's November they had a, an error in their report. So there's an objection time period running, we see no objection, reason to file objections on behalf of the county. The recommendations are as we expected and what we requested. So that, when those are issued, that will be the final destatement claims for the county.
Final decree, how we deal? What do we do in the meantime before that's issued? Continue to use it?
Right, um, we have filed those claims because we have to, it's part of the adjudication process, but our priority date on that is, those are from nineteen thirty-one, I think is the priority date we claimed on those, and we have a, a right to continue using those, this declaration or this decree is kind of recognizing that in this, in this system.
Right now, water right is in place, what to do at the.
Correct, yes.
Twenty-three?
Well, I went and looked, found a grader that I'm interested in for district three. Went and traded out, it's got five thousand dollars on, to two thousand model. But you said that you have a track on somewhat an auction, so we can hold off on that a little while, but.
We'll find out if them, we'll try to pin down where we're gonna be with them, and if we're not, we'll go with that one. If it's not a savings.
If it's not water?
If it's a savings, if, if them aren't higher than the one we're looking at from that then, we'll just take whatever deals the best.
These will go.
And you make the, you make the decision when we get to that.
Yeah.
If that's what you wanna do.
Yeah, well, I'd like to look at the one that, you know.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
How are the tires on the one up there?
The front tires are pretty good, the back ones would run probably a year or something, maybe that'd be replaced. It's got a brand new set of change forks, it's never been on it for a while. Four thousand, four thousand dollars of change.
All right. Is that my, can I? Yeah.
You can let me know when.
Yeah, I'll, I'll. They're, they're probably gonna get a good deal, but we don't, they, they tell us.
Are those, uh, do you know the number, seven seventy-two C H R?
I think they're pretty light ones.
It's a C H R. Yeah. He always got one, I think, to have that. And it gets a lot of work done, too. Yeah, this one, I couldn't find any oil leaks or any loose bins or anything.
That's not very many hours, though.
No. And with the forest service happening, they're not gonna work real hard. Probably been a lot of road, road and grass. So I will call that fellow I talked to, I'll tell him for a while.
Yeah, won't be long, though, until we know.
Actually, I'd like to place that one forty line if we could, sometimes.
Hold up here, you guys.
Call it the money pit.
It's the first one they come out with the front wheel drive.
I mostly bought the John Deere, they had those long tractors for thirty years, we put them on three years.
Okay, so do you know that?
The only thing I saw different about the John Deere, I looked at, that one forty, the circle, the blade that made it was a little bit lighter, not as. But this one, I don't practice anything.
With the blade, they're off at one forty, we had one day, pulled it, the, the, the arms that come down, we hit a stump, lopped snow, and there a rock in that road. And it bent the blade back up to the one D today. I hit a stump with the wing with mine that time, and it didn't do any, any good.
We're down to executive session, and we're right close to Alex, so why don't we do Alex?
Okay.
And that's executive session, so I guess we could do. Could do them both.
Okay.